Despite the best efforts of the clerk and myself to scour the obits, there's no one to recall tonight, so we'll proceed to invite everyone to join us in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the order, please.
Meeting on September 9th, Councilor Vogel.
Present.
Councilor Zee.
Here.
Councilor Devlin.
Here.
Councilor Agarman.
Here.
Councilor Junta.
Present.
Councilor Khan.
Present.
Councilor O'Brien.
Here for a couple more minutes.
Councilor Shan.
Present.
Councilor Tanta.
Here.
Councilor Connell.
Present.
We have 10 present.
Thank you. Are there any late filed items?
There are three items that councils will see on their desk. The first is the amendment to Order 132. There's a second version of the agenda that simply reflects the committee item Ordinance 37 as coming out of committee. There's also a communication from Councilor Junta that I made a copy of that put on your desk, which is not a late file. It's with respect to the school department.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late file items.
Second. In second, a discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The rules are suspended. We'll accept these items. Let's see what public comment there is.
We have a full house. The first name on the list, Susan Shefty.
Hi, I'm Sue Shefty, and I'm here to report you tonight because the mayor has appointed me to fill vacancy on the library board of directors pending your confirmation. I'd be very pleased to serve the library, which I love, in this capacity, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you.
Counselors, no questions? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you to the council president and members of the council. Thank you to my fellow candidates. To note, it takes courage to voluntarily step from the sidelines and step onto the field of play. Members of the council, I respectfully submit my name and qualifications for your review and consideration for the open seat. On January 1, I will join this council as a representative of Ward 5 in the interim. I opted into this process so to contribute to set the groundwork on the important issues facing us in 2020 and beyond. If chosen, I will work to raise the level of discourse and to fully represent and protect the positions of the residents and taxpayers of Newburyport. Thank you for any and all considerations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Linda Lambert, 58 Merrimack Street. And I wanted to just remind all the public about the meeting on September 19 regarding the ordinance in the Waterfront West development. While I don't expect you to open it up for discussion tonight, and I know that Andy Port will be doing an overview at the meeting on September 19, what I would like is for you to have a dialogue tonight so that the public is clear on what opportunities they will have moving forward to give input into the ordinance and the final development plan. So if you would be so kind as letting us know, number one, will the public and abutters be limited or restricted on what they can speak about on September 19? Number two, will there be an additional meeting after September 19 for both public and abutter input? Number three, before the city council votes, will there be opportunity for the planning board and abutters and public to give additional input? And finally, will the abutters, public, and the planning board be able to give any input on major modifications of the development plan? While I know that this is a lot of opportunity for the public to speak and that there has been a lot of meetings with the subcommittees on the project itself, I was very disappointed to see very little representation incorporated into the ordinance. So that is why I want to make sure that the public knows what their opportunities are moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I hope you'll actually share your list with the clerk so that he can share it with the appropriate committee chairs who are conducting those meetings. If you had a chance, just jot them down and leave them with the clerk. That looked easy. Thank you. Pam Ketchum.
Hi, Pam Ketchum, 15 Washington Street. I wanted to talk about Councilor Earl's vacancy. I believe anyone who is running in the upcoming elections should not be appointed. For those running for a council seat, I believe it would give them an unfair advantage over the other candidates as they would actually be serving on the council to which they're seeking to be elected. They would have been voted onto it by the fellow councilors, an endorsement of sorts. It could open them up to pressures, real or perceived, from others who may be in a position to endorse or not endorse them. I do believe Bob Cronin would be an excellent replacement for Councilor Earl's open seat. He's not running for office, so there are no conflicts. The seat is an important responsibility, no less so because it is for a short period of time. When Bob was on the council, he put in an extraordinary amount of time, so he's extremely knowledgeable regarding the issues facing our city. He worked hard for the residents in his ward as well as those throughout the whole city. He has a lot of institutional knowledge regarding the council, and I know he would put in the necessary time and work to ensure he got up to speed quickly so he would be well-prepared to hit the ground running representing the residents of the city. I also think his familiarity with the processes of the council would be a plus. During his time on the council, Bob demonstrated that he sought out different ideas and viewpoints, and he worked with others to find solutions and compromises. He is honest, upfront, open-minded, and do what is best for the city and the residents. I ask you to vote for Bob Cronin for the open council seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jane Snow, 9 Coffin Street. First of all, I wanted to thank everyone. It was impressive to see that five people came forward and offered their time for the open seat. I know that that's a brave thing to do. It's something I would never be brave to do, so I greatly respect those that did. And I think Pam did a wonderful job of summing up the overview of the open seat, and I appreciate that. And again, I would also like to put in a word of support for Bob Cronin. We have five wonderful candidates. It's a very hard decision, but for all the things that Pam said, so I won't waste your time repeating them, I would gladly support Bob. And just as a kind of a thank you that we maybe have forgotten, to thank the people who sponsored the Field of Flags. If you didn't get up to see it this week, especially at nighttime, it's my favorite event of the year. So I think it's still up for a few more days. If you missed it, take a swing by. And again, favorite time is night with the lights. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good point, Jane. Tom Solemy.
Thank you, Mr. President, counselors. This will probably be a really bad sales pitch for me, but I don't think I'm going to lose any votes. But I do want to take a moment in all seriousness to thank you for your time you spend, not only at this table, but in meetings, talking with constituents, and just thinking about the decisions you need to make. We all have other demands in our time. I've got two kids at home. People at the table have kids as well, and I know every moment you spend here doing this stuff, this time away from them. So that's a big sacrifice. I've thought about running for the seat, and I've decided, well, I'd rather spend my time at home right now. So thank you all for stepping up in all seriousness. That is why I sought this opportunity. I've got some experience on the waterfront, good or bad, and I really thought if that was coming up for a vote this fall, I'd like to make sure that the folks who were considering it had some knowledge of what was going to happen or what could potentially happen. Just had a stronger idea of what's going on down there. I think all the candidates who have put their names forward are very solid, so I'm not suggesting I know more than they do, but I've been beat up a little more than they have. I do want to say, though, that I hope whoever you appoint is able to temper the divisiveness I feel on this board with some of the conversations I have with you. Really, no one asked me, well, a couple of people asked me why I ran, and one person asked me where I stood on issues. And that was the extent of the due diligence, and it seemed to fall more around political lines. So I hope whoever you pick tonight and whoever's elected in January can work together with -- and I hope the entire building, everyone in the building, can find a way to work forward. I mean, we have a lot of divisive myths at the federal level. I really hope that we're not going to reach that point on the local level. It's a small town, very small geography. I think we can all find some common ground, so that's it. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President and counselors. When I heard that Councilor Earl's was about to step down, I did decide to submit my name. I did not speak to another counselor other than Councilor Earl's, and I only informed the mayor after I had emailed each of you. I'm not interested in being for or against the mayor. I'm not interested in being for and against or against any counselor. I'm really interested in doing what the council does when it's at its best, and that's serving the people of Newburyport. You do have many important issues before you in the remaining months. You have the waterfront, and these affect all of us regardless of where we live, the waterfront, both the private and the public side, trash, streets and sidewalks, and housing, and those are just a few. You may end up not voting on any of those, or you may end up voting on all of those. But as Jim McCauley said, you're going to be setting the path for the future term, and I think all of that deliberative time is time well-spent together so we can find the best solutions to each of those issues. So whether I'm chosen or not, I thank you for what you do for the people of Newburyport. I do know it's a lot of hard work, and you're missing times with your spouses, your children, and your grandchildren. So I know it's a hard thing that you do each night, and this could be a tough vote, but I wish you the best tonight and for the rest of the term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. First off, being a council and sitting here with most of you has been an honor and a privilege. I believe that in the next three months, three and a half months, that there are some important issues. I also believe that while I will do total due diligence as a at-large counselor, I understand that the incumbents and the people coming after me are probably going to be more of policymakers, and I am going to be more of a placeholder. But I'd like to share ideas, help the council, help everybody, and move the city forward in that direction. With that being said, I am basically fully retired. I have one case still out there. My wife is fully retired. I have no plans or aspirations to move anywhere forward after January other than traveling with my wife. You know, we already have the boat pending sail, and if you notice on the letter that I sent to you all, I've actually retired from being a master mariner. I've given that up in my retirement. I just feel that in October, in November, in December, using baseball analogy, that balls are coming pretty quick at the city council. And it takes a learning curve to get up to, to get to time to swing. And I believe that I can fulfill that in the three months coming ahead. And my final statement is to all the people of Newburyport that however this vote goes tonight, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the people of Newburyport on this council, before that as a harbor commissioner, and even in my failed attempt at running for mayor. In any of these parts, the people of Newburyport have always been first and foremost, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Germanara.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Good evening, city counselors and city clerk Jones, Rob Germanara. I know it's a little unusual if a position is filled by somebody running at large to the council or for council for that matter, but I realize how highly qualified Captain Cronin is and Mr. Cameron and Mr. McCauley, but as a lot of you know, I've been very involved in city affairs for a long time, acting, as some people have said, as a city council without being one. And I would ask you to consider thinking outside the box and consider putting me on the city council for the interim position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bill Harris, 56 Lime Street. I have three topics in two minutes. So number one, the Maritime Museum CPC grant, they have three preservation restrictions. I've already told you about that. One was not generally known, the state one. The museum's ready to do an amendment of the city preservation restriction to be sure they're all compatible. I hope you support this grant. That's number one. Number two, you have a deed from the NRA to transfer So-called Lot C, which is behind the Custom House. And it says in the deed to the Merrimack River, but you need, someday you need to remember, it doesn't go to the Merrimack River. It goes two and a half feet short because the bulkhead was built out. And the NRA didn't, their lawyer just couldn't fix this in time before they go out of business. So remember at some point the plan for the waterfront. It's very important that the city protect its rights and the opportunities for the public on the waterside. So that's, accept the deed, but just remember, don't follow the language. It says to the Merrimack River, but it doesn't. Third topic, Councilor Agarman's proposal that you have an ordinance to strengthen the role of the city council in reviewing settlements, legal settlements by the city. That may take some time to work on, but I think it's very important to do that. It's very important, if there are notices, they need to be properly recorded. If someone fails to appeal on time, that's a fatal flaw. But we need integrity in the process, and the city council should be involved in important settlements because the city council plays a big role in protecting overall city interests. So those are my three topics, and I wish you the best selecting a city counselor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you did it in 56, a minute and 56 seconds, Bill. That concludes the public comment period. Everyone who signed up has now spoken. Thank you all for your comments and your advice to the council. At this time, we're going to proceed to the first agenda item, which is the selection of a city counselor at large to replace the seat occupied by Gregory Earl's, who has resigned. At the outset, let me just say to each of these individuals, to Edward Cameron, Robert Cronin, Robert Germanara, Hazam Mahmood, James McCauley, and Thomas Solemy, we all thank you for your willingness to serve, your expression of interest. It's hard sometimes to raise your hand and say, "Pick me," but that's what everyone here does. And it is perhaps a measure of the care that the people of the city exercise over this municipality, that we have six highly qualified candidates to serve the remaining period of time between now and January that would have been served had Councilor Earl's not resigned. And we thank you all for your expression of interest. And understand that the process that we've laid out is one that is, has precedent in the city. It is consistent with state law and with our charter. And we're going to proceed forthwith on the election of a new city counselor who will be sworn in following this election. Now here's how it's going to work. Each counselor will rise and state the name of the candidate he or she supports in the first round of voting. If no one gets a majority, and a majority is six, then the lowest vote getter or vote getters, if there are two that are lowest, will be eliminated. Then we will vote again. And again, the lowest vote getter will be eliminated until we can arrive at a majority vote on one name. Are there any questions from the counselors about how we're going to proceed? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to conduct the vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as I go through this roll call, please state your choice clearly, and we'll write it down. First, Councilor Vogel.
James McCauley.
Councilor Zee.
Robert J. Cronin.
Councilor Devlin.
I'd very quickly thank everybody for volunteering. Everybody is a repeat offender, so they actually know that this is difficult and thankless at times, so it's thank you.
To me, it came down between the two counselors. Bob Cronin. Councilor Agarman. Councilor Junta.
Robert J. Cronin.
Councilor Khan.
James McCauley.
Councilor O'Brien.
Robert J. Cronin.
Councilor Shan.
James McCauley.
Councilor Tanta.
Ed Cameron.
President Connell.
Edward Cameron.
Okay, so those, first round, Councilor Cronin had one, two, three, four, five. James McCauley had two. Ed Cameron had two. I'm sorry, James McCauley had three. Mr. President, what would you like to do?
Well, there are three individuals, Mr. Germanara, Dr. Mahmood, and Mr. Solemy, who did not receive votes. So they will be eliminated, and now we'll move to a second round in the same order. You will vote as you did in the first round. You are not bound by a previous vote. You are able to vote for one of three candidates, Mr. McCauley, Mr. Cameron, or Mr. Cronin.
Want to understand? Round two. Are we ready, Mr. President?
I am.
Councilor Vogel.
James McCauley.
Councilor Zee.
Robert Cronin.
Councilor Devlin.
Bob Cronin.
Councilor Agarman. Councilor Junta.
Robert J. Cronin.
Councilor Khan.
James McCauley.
Councilor O'Brien.
Robert J. Cronin.
Councilor Shan.
James McCauley.
Councilor Tanta.
James McCauley.
Councilor Connell.
James McCauley.
The way I count, James McCauley received six votes, which under Section 211 is a majority, and we have filled the vacancy. Am I correct?
That's my count as well. Mr. McCauley.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do you need to borrow a tie?
The council will be in a great place as well. Mr. McCauley is sworn in and seated on the council. No, you can't go home. Get your bowtie. Thank you, counselors. A counselor-at-large position.
A counselor-at-large position.
Of the city of Newburyport.
Of the city of Newburyport.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
In accordance with the Constitution.
In accordance with the Constitution.
The United States.
Of the United States.
Laws of the Commonwealth.
Laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Newburyport.
Of the city of Newburyport.
To the best of my abilities.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
For the city clerk.
Congratulations.
Do I get the side out?
Grab a seat. How's it going, Chris?
There's your seat. The clerk is being queued. Here's your name tag.
At the risk of being repetitive, I want to sincerely thank all of those very decent, hard-working, and well-qualified individuals who also volunteered to sit in this seat that Mr. McCauley is sitting in now. We should thank them all, and if you don't have a chance, go out of your way to thank them when you bump into them on the street. All great folks, many of whom have already served in some capacity for the city, and all of whom would have done an admirable job. It's time for the mayor's comments. Mr. Coogan.
Mr. President, on behalf of the mayor, I have prepared a brief upstate six items pertaining to tonight's agenda. The first is the mayor submitted, has submitted a supplemental budget in his council agenda totaling $179,000 approximately. The request is funded by available revenue following the passage of the city's 2020 budget as well as increases in the estimated state aid based on the governor's, the budget, state budget signed by Governor Baker. Included in this budget is increased funding for the fiscal year 20 school department budget, increased funding for additional sidewalk repairs, and funding for legal expenses associated with mandatory federal and state regulations permitting for the water and sewer divisions. And we look forward to discussing these funding needs in further detail. Second is the NRA Lot C acceptance. Under the recommendation of both our planning director and our attorney, R.J. Lyman, who's overseeing our home real petition through the legislature, we submit to the council's approval a deed for a small parcel near the Harbor Master Facility north of the Custom House known as Lot C. There is a title issued related to this deed, and conveying the property now rather than waiting for the dissolution would be the cleanest way possible to deal with an approximate waiting for the dissolution would be the cleanest way possible to deal with an approximately 200-square-foot parcel and avoid future complications. It would just simply be one less title issue for the city to address once the NRA is dissolved. The NRA is prepared to convey this parcel and has already authorized their chair to sign the deed to the city. And we can provide additional information to the subcommittee, and we could even arrange for Attorney Lyman to attend that subcommittee or the next city council meeting for an update. In the meantime, though, we are working with the House Committee on Bills in the third reading on our home real petition to dissolve the NRA, which is House Bill 3698. And over the past few weeks, committee members and the legal counsel for the committee have requested information and clarification on our bill. And we understand that these inquiries are routine and part of the due diligence process for this committee, particularly for legislation that results in the conveyance of real estate. And we've been answering their questions succinctly and promptly, and we look forward to this bill passing shortly. An update on the parking plan on the waterfront. We are prepared to, the city is prepared to remove approximately 125 parking spaces from a portion of the west and east waterfront lots. We're prepared to do this by Monday, September 16th. There are two pieces of legislation that we asked the council to pass, Orders 134 and 137, which would allow employee permit holders that would be inconvenienced by these changes in our parking on the waterfronts, the ability to park with their existing parking permits in the Tickcomb Street parking garage, as well as to streamline the employee parking permit to one structure fee for all of downtown. And it should be noted that the NRA did vote favorably on this removal of spaces at their August 13th meeting. An update on the High Street restriping. Our line contractor has been removing the incorrect paint and line markings on High Street. Tonight is the final night that they'll be removing that, those lines. I just want to note, they have been using a special machine that was brought up from New Jersey to remove the paint, that does it away without damaging the asphalt. The plan is for the street to be relined tomorrow night, beginning at 6:00 on Tuesday. So High Street will be closed to vehicular traffic from the section of Three Roads to Winter Street, beginning at 6:00 p.m. tomorrow for the work to be done, and that should, and will remain closed until Wednesday morning around 7:00 a.m. And it should be noted that the paint is wet when applied, and it takes a few minutes to dry.
Really?
And also that the contractor is responsible for covering all the costs associated with relining the street. An update on CSOs, the newly formed Merrimack River District Commission is meeting on September 30th in Haverhill, and on that agenda will be the establishment of a flagging system for the river, as well as an additional water quality testing program. And finally, I do want to announce that after 16 years of service in the mayor's office, Lois Honiger is retiring, which she has done her too as well. During her time, Lois served as executive aide to Mayor Lavender, Mayor Moke, and Mayor Holliday. And I just did a very off-the-back-of-the-envelope calculation, I figured that she has probably fielded thousands of constituent inquiries during her time here, and she's always treated residents with kindness and respect in doing so. Lois has also served as the mayor's arts and cultural liaison, helping to establish the Newburyport Cultural District, as well as fostering a strong relationship with the Massachusetts Film Office. Her work with the local arts will have a lasting impact on this community, and she will be missed at City Hall. And on behalf of Mayor Holliday, I want to thank Lois for her years of service to this community and wish her well. And Lois's last day will be next Friday, September 20th.
Do you want to approach the microphone? Are there any questions, Mr. Coogan? Councillor Agaman.
Yeah, I just had one question. The combined sewer overflow work, you mentioned a flagging system. Can you explain what that is?
Sure. I believe it's being developed right now through Senator DiZoglio's office. The idea is that there would be some sort of notification in the river itself should a CSO event occur.
So it's literally flagging?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Tanta, and then Councillor Shan.
I've had a number of constituents ask me if the line removal process discolors the road, if that discoloration is permanent. Do you know?
Yeah, I guess the short answer is, what, to what I understand what happens is, when the street is, when a brand-new street is paved and there's new asphalt on the ground, there's the actual aggregate and the binder, and then there's oils, residues that are from that actual paving. Those dissipate usually after the first winter season, so what you're seeing on the street right now is an accelerated process of that. So by the, by next spring, the entire road will look that exact same color. By the way, I don't think the mayor ever gets any questions.
All right, just so folks on High Street appreciate, so tomorrow night at 6:00, if you park on High Street, you need to park on a side street, so you're not going to be able to get on High Street at all.
That's correct. So residents should be prepared to make alternative arrangements to get on the road in the morning, because all of the side streets will be closed.
No, High Street will be closed, not the side streets.
I'm sorry, all of High Street from Three Roads to Winter Street, and any access onto High Street will also be blocked off.
Wow. Good point. Further questions? I just have one additional comment, and it's similar to the comment I made at the Department Heads Meeting last week. And it has to do with the two faces that are indispensable and really represent the city. And one of those faces is our city clerk, but usually, that's because people have parking tickets and they're waving that under his nose. But the other face is that of Lois Honiger. And I have a hard time imagining that we're going to find another friendly face and calm demeanor to fill the shoes that she is leaving. You're not leaving, actually leaving your shoes, are you? But on behalf of myself and all the councillors, and the councillors who for years sat here and depended on you, I don't have to speak for the mayors. We all thank you for your service, and good luck in retirement. It's not a bad deal. Thanks. All right. Mayor's comment done. Let's walk through the consent agenda, please.
This evening, the consent agenda consisted of the approval of the minutes for the August 19th meeting. There are no transfers. There are the following communications. There's a Waterfront West Sustainability Memo, that is to refer to Planning and Development. There's the FY 2019 Year-In Financial Report, to go to Budget and Finance. There's the Whittier Operational Report, to be received and filed. There's the Newburyport Half Marathon, to be held on October 20th, that's to go to Public Safety. There's the CPC Revised Recommendation for the 2020 Appropriations, to go to Budget and Finance. There are the following appointments, and I believe the council president is recused on the record for the first one, which is Susan Scheftie, 36 Woodland Street, to the Library Board of Directors until October 1, 2026. Next is Gregory Downs, 40 Riverview Drive, Newbury, Assistant Harbor Master, Shellfish Constable, Special Police Officer. That's the same for the following three. Andrew Malatesta is, they're all until October 1, 2022. He's at 37 Federal Street, Newburyport. There's Mike Merriman, 6 Little Pond Road, 101, 2022. And last, Tim Wareham, 1020th Street in Newbury, until 101, 2022. Next appointment is Rachel Webb, P.O. Box 742, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, until October 1, 2020. She's to be referred to Planning and Development. Next are reappointments. Donna Conway, 27 Marlborough Street, they're all to the Emma Andrews Library until 10:30, 2020. Anya G. Elrod, 43 Purchase Street. Elizabeth Valeriani, 29 Oak Street. Elizabeth L. Watson, 53 Warren Street. The following items are removed from their respective committees, such that a motion approved and the consent agenda will bring them out. Planning and Development, Appointment Number 115. Public Safety, Communication 174, 175. Public Utilities, Communication 177. And that collectively is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
One moment.
Could, I have Communication 189 removed, please.
Which is this?
That's CPC Revised Recommendation.
Yep, it's out.
Approved as amended?
Thank you.
Moved, and was there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Tanta. I am recusing myself from this vote, so you'll hear nothing from me.
So that approve as amended?
Which one?
Any discussion?
All those in favor?
All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
All those recused?
All those recused, and why?
Yes. And why?
And why?
She's my wife.
On the record.
The consent agenda having been passed, will move to the regular, regular agenda. I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, oh, the mayor's update, yes, that's not in front of me here.
Motion to receive and file? Second.
Moved and seconded to accept, receive and file the mayor's update. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let's start with the, with the regular agenda then, please. Communications.
Communication 178, it's an emergency preamble with respect to a block party on Britcher Street that will be held on September 14th. The next scheduled meeting is September 30th, such an emergency exists. Councillor Agaman.
Councillor Agaman.
Motion to approve, but I want to state that I know the applicant. I didn't realize he was putting his name on, Christian Hansen. I don't think it's going to interfere with my objectivity in the block party application, but if you want me to recuse, I can.
I see no need, unless the councillor raises an objection. Hearing none, we'll proceed.
Second.
It moved and seconded to refer this to?
To approve the emergency preamble.
Approved the emergency preamble. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an emergency preamble on it. What's the, will the council now?
Move to 178.
Shall we? Okay.
Relates to 178, which is the block party of Christian Hansen, which relates to the street to be barricaded is Britcher Street, desired street closing is Britcher Street at Hill Street, September 14th.
Motion to approve.
Seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What do we have in second reading? Nothing. So we're going to go to the appointments, reappointments here.
Communications that were removed from the consent agenda.
True.
Good point.
Removed Communication 189.
189, yeah.
CPC Revised Recommendation for FY 2020.
Councillor Tanta.
Yes, motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Moved and seconded to Budget and Finance. Discussion.
Yeah, the reason I wanted this removed is that in committee, the Budget and Finance Committee requested that we receive statements on the preservation restrictions from the Historical Society of Old Newbury and from the Newburyport Historical Society. So we will be discussing them later, and I wanted to point that out to other members of the committee, as well as to the public. We had them in committee, we requested them two meetings ago, and so we just put them before you tonight so that you would have them before you. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of referring this matter to Budget and Finance, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done. Thank you for the correction, Councillor Tanta. We are into second reading, reappointments.
Second reading, reappointments. Appointment 116, Barry J. McBride, 5 Pine Street, Salisbury, Assistant Wiring Inspector, till 5/1/2020.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
It's a roll call for Appointment 116, councillor Vogel.
Yes.
Councillor Z. Councillor Devlin.
Yes.
Councillor Agaman.
Yes.
Councillor Jenta.
Yes.
Councillor Khan.
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien.
Yes.
Councillor McCauley.
Yes.
Thought I was going to forget that.
Very good.
Councillor Shan.
Yes.
Councillor Tanta.
Yes.
Councillor Connell.
Yes.
Five of 11 to 1, nothing. Appointment's approved.
Good.
Orders? First order is 139. It's with respect to establishing zones in parking. The operative changes are Zone 2, which adds Court Street from High Street to Washington Street, southeast of the east side, Green Street, High Street to Merrimack Street, both sides accept a loading zone in front of 26 Green Street. Market Street is from High Street to Merrimack, both sides. Washington Street is from Green Street to Winter Street, both sides.
Motion to refer to Public Safety.
Second. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that motion, please.
Public Safety.
Public Safety, and seconded by councillor Tanta. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is moved to Public Safety. Order 140.
140 is the City of Newburyport's fiscal year 2020 supplemental budget request in the total amount of $179,101 submitted, councillor Tanta.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Moved and seconded to Budget and Finance. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done. 141.
Order 141 is, the city council authorized the payment of the following prior year bills in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 64, Human Resources, Pay Data Payroll Services, $30, Human Resources, Mcfee Design, 1843, Parks Dog Waste Depot, 314, submitted, councillor Tanta.
Motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
Second.
Moved and seconded to Budget and Finance. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is done, Budget and Finance. 142.
142 is as follows. The City of Newburyport approves and authorizes the acceptance of a deed from the NRA to the city, substantially the same form, or apostle referred to as Lot C. And the mayor is authorized to act on behalf of the city and turn to any instruments associated therewith. Councillor Agaman.
Motion to refer to Planning and Development and Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Committee of the Whole, thank you. Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is referred to Planning and Development, Committee of the Whole. 143.
143 reads as follows, Section 13, 179, Handicap Zones, High Street, one space on the northerly side of High Street, starting at a distance of 60 feet from the easterly corner of Summer Street, and running westerly for a distance of 20 feet, submitted, councillor Shan.
Motion to refer to Public Safety.
Second.
Moved and seconded to Public Safety. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It goes to Public Safety. Ordinances.
We have a tabled ordinance, Mr. President, which is Ordinance 39, with respect to salary of elected officials.
Motion to remove from the table? Second.
Moved and seconded, move to the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's off the table.
Motion to approve on first reading?
Second.
Moved to approve, and seconded by councillor Jenta. Discussion. Councillor Agaman.
I defer to the chair.
You defer to councillor Tanta.
Yes, I just wanted to note that we discussed this two meetings ago, I believe, and it failed. Council President and I have resubmitted it. During the budget process, we approved funding for both of these increases, the increase in the mayor's salary and the increase in the salary, the stipend for school committee members. There is no change in the city council salary. And so essentially, this is the same measure that appeared before you before, and I urge that you approve it. Thank you.
Further discussion, Counselor Agaman?
Yeah, I don't have any comment on the substance. It's just I think when we tabled this, I voted present because I really didn't understand the procedure. So we rejected it, and now it's back. I just wanted to make sure we cleared that up. That's all.
Thank you. Does the clerk like to respond?
To the best of my ability, the clerk made an error. We thought we passed it, if you remember. I said, "Motion passed." It was seven. The statute requires eight on salary enhancement of elected officials. And so I talked to the city solicitor and also did a little research myself. There's no reason, because it's non-zoning, that it can't come back in. So it came back in in the same form. In fact, one could have argued that under the charter, we saw it for a second time, not a first time, we could have voted on it last time. But I think, you know, probably discretion better part of valor, we didn't do it. It was tabled.
Thank you.
Further discussion, Counselor Zied?
Just really briefly, I just want to say that it failed, but this is the amended. This was the product of the sort of negotiation we had in committee and on the floor. So say, it did fail, but this is sort of what the outcome was of that process. So we just need to get to eight instead of to six or seven, pardon me, as I want. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this matter.
It's a roll call on Ordinance 39, Salary of Elected Officials. Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
I have to fit that M in better, don't I?
And the outcome?
Motion passes quite clearly this time.
Thank you, Counselor. Ordinance 41.
Ordinance 41 is the zoning map, expanding the Colby Farm Residential Overlay District to include three additional apostles, eight Colby Farm Road, 10 Colby Farm Road, and 12 Colby Farm Road. Submitted, Counselor Jenta.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's in planning and development. Let's move to committee items. Budget and Finance.
Motion to remove Order 132 and address, and have it divided, whatever we say.
Second to divide.
Motion to divide, thank you.
Motion to divide. Seconded. Do people understand what this is? I'm going to ask the chair to address the matter. Go ahead.
Yes, this is the set of appropriations that comes from the Community Preservation Committee. We have already voted some of them through, some we held in committee because we wanted further information. So we don't vote on them as a bundle. We vote on each appropriation separately, so therefore we have to divide the question. So that's what I asked to do.
And the projects up for a vote tonight are Projects 1, 4, 7, and 9. Is that correct?
And 6.
1, 4, 6, 7, and 9, excuse me. Thank you for the correction.
Not 9, right?
Well, actually, 9 will not come up, but I also have, I have to withdraw my motion.
Withdraw the second?
Remove from committee.
I'll withdraw and second that?
We, yeah.
One moment. Okay. Moved and seconded, both have been withdrawn. Is there a substitute motion?
Motion to remove from committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded to remove this from committee. Discussion. Counselor Jenta?
Just point of order. Projects 1, 4, 6, and 7.
1, 4, 6, and 7, yes, that's what we will be discussing.
No longer 9, huh? Okay. All those in favor of removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve and divide the question.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve and divide. Anbanque or individually? I'm sorry? Individually or those four items all together?
Motion to divide.
Divide, right, okay. And seconded. So this is the motion to take them up separately. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you can take them up separately. I'll start with number one.
Motion to approve Project Number 1, Newburyport High School Exterior Woodwork Restoration, Phase 3.
Second.
And they'll hear a second on the side of the room. Counselor Zied? Discussion, Counselor Tantar?
Yes, the committee voted 3-0 to recommend approval. This is for the work that actually has already substantively been done on the cupola at the high school. On May 13th, we, the council had appropriated $219,903 to do that restoration work. And we were told at the time there was a possibility that the high school would receive community preservation funds. So that would, if we approve this tonight, $110,903 will be returned to the sidewalk replacement project at the high school. All right, so at the, it's a middle school, more, all right? And so that's the amount, $110,903. It was reported in committee that additional rot had been found. However, the school department feels that their contingency will cover that work on the cupola. We held this back because the Historic Society of Old Newbury had not had the opportunity to review the work that was to be done, to determine whether it was going to be done to the standards set by the Secretary of Interior. They've had the opportunity to do that, and we have that document, you have that document before you, and so we recommend that that be done. Thank you very much.
Further discussion, Counselor Zied?
The only thing I want to add is that it's my understanding from committee that the preservation restriction has not yet been recorded, and that's the final step. And that is a condition of this grant, granted that this is from one city account to the other effectively, but that we expect that to be a clerical thing to be completed. So I just want to put that, so we close the loop on this one altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I believe that's unanimous. Item 1.
Motion to approve Project Number 7, High School Exterior Woodwork Restoration, Phase 4.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Zied. Discussion. Counselor, Counselor Tantar?
$84,000 for the cornices. It's the final part of the restoration for the high school. It will complete the project. We held this back because we were waiting once again for that same communication from the Historic Society of Old Newbury. 3-0, we recommend approval.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. Counselor Tantar?
Motion to approve Project Number 4, Cushion House Electrical System, $59,430.
Second. Moved and seconded by Counselor Zied. Discussion. Counselor Tantar?
Yes, this, once again, we held this back because we, the, we did not have a letter from the Newburyport Historic Commission or the Mass Historic Commission on this. The work is necessary because the electrical work in the museum is knob and tube, I believe. It poses somewhat of a safety hazard to the building. The, a new PR will be written, and it will be in perpetuity for the structure, and it will be held by the Newburyport Historic Commission. Understanding is that the current PR being held by the Mass Historic Commission and the Mass Historic Commission, because of lack of staffing, is moving these to the local level, and so the Newburyport Historic Commission will pick it up. And we have that communication. They met with the principals, they reviewed the work to be done. It's consistent with preserving the historic characteristic of the building, and they went to some extent to assure that that will take place. This amount, this $59,430 will cover about half the project. The other half has been raised by the museum. So we recommend 3-0 approval.
Further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
Motion to approve Custom House, $75,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor Tantar?
Yeah, this $75,000 will cover a portion of a relatively small total, a small portion of the relative total amount, which could be as much as $700,000 or $800,000, from what I understand. It's a critical piece of the project that will result in temperature, humidity-controlled environment being created there. For over the past 20 years, this has been a goal of the Custom House. There are some extremely valuable historical artifacts stored there that are in danger of being lost because of the humidity, and this project would address that. It would also allow the museum to host visiting displays from other museums. They can't currently do that because they can't assure the artifacts would be preserved. So the priceless historic artifacts will be preserved there. I would also note that the Custom House has, allows Newburyport residents to go to the museum for free, so they have offered that to the community. This, this, this preservation appropriation has been supported by the Newburyport Preservation Trust. At the last meeting, Carol Ann McPherson, the first director, I understand, appeared before us and stated that it was their intent then to try to get this done, and she urged us to do it. William Harris presented some very useful information. I did take a look at that webpage, which is fascinating. It has to do with the funding from museums in the United States. It's approximately 32% of funding at historical society museums, such as this one, comes from the local public sector. So, it was very thorough. It's a little old, it's about 11 years old, but I thank, I thank Mr. Harris for that information. On the preservation restriction, the Newburyport Historical Commission will replace the Mass Historical Commission as the holder of the preservation restriction, and it too will remain in effect in perpetuity. The work will be done with, they reviewed the proposed work, it will be done with a minimal effect on the historic character of the Custom House, and they will monitor the project and review plans. As part of this, in committee, because the Newburyport Historic Commission is going to rewrite the preservation restriction, we had to change some of the language that was originally in the appropriation. And I suppose I should propose that as amendment right now, Mr. President?
I think so.
You have that before you. I had to put it on your desk. It's a relatively small change. You have that one item that is bulleted, all right? And in the first sentence before permanent preservation restriction, we are adding the word "new." So that sentence will read, "The applicant shall finalize, execute, and record a new permanent preservation restriction." Then if you skip down to the third sentence from the end, we are moving, in committee, we amended to remove the clause, "If the NHC determines that amendments or additions to the existing PR are necessary," we are deleting that, all right? Then changing the small t to a capital T, so the sentence then, the previous sentence ends in "necessary," the new sentence is, "The applicant shall finalize, execute, and record, and update to said PR, and we are recommending you delete accordingly." Anyone, any questions on that amendment?
I have one question.
Yep. Counselor Agaman?
Yeah, in an email from the attorney from the NRA, she pointed out that there was a subordination that the existing city restriction is subordinate to the state restriction, but you were saying that the state's kind of going out of the business of holding these because they don't have the staff anyway, so that won't, that it will no longer be subordinate. There'll be one restriction, and it'll be held by the city.
That's my understanding.
Thank you.
By this, yeah, by the city.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor Zied?
Motion on the amendment, right?
Yes.
I'll wait till we dispense with the amendment.
We're voting first on the amendment. Discussion on the amendment. Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the amendment as recommended by Counselor Tantar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. And now we revert to the original motion. Counselor Zied?
I oppose this in committee, and I'll be opposing it tonight as well. I think we've had this discussion in several contexts, so I don't need to go through everything. I would just remind everybody that I think the city has been, you know, very generous with the Custom House over the years through CPA appropriations, and most notably and most recently with the transfer of the land and so, and the building itself. And I just, we had some other CPA projects, and there's a benefit to taking them individually, but also to look at them holistically and say, you know, this is how we're taking the entire pot of CPA funds and distributing them. And in this case, we had a couple of projects, for example, the Barlet Mall, that were shorted from their original recommendation, to which we're going to do some of the sidewalks, for example, but not all of them. And I think in light of the recent generosity, there's no, there's no reason to support this this year. We talked about this last year when we had a similar grant, and I suspect that we'll be talking about it next year when we have another grant as well. So I am going to oppose it, and it has nothing to do with the organization or what it's doing and so forth. It just has to do with a holistic kind of look at what we're doing with CPA funds. And just to remind folks, if this is money that we're taking from residents, we have a lot of talk about affordability, and so whether we're taking this money and how generous can or should we be, that's essentially the question that we're asking ourselves today. So I ask you to consider that as you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Further discussion, Counselor Devlin?
Right, I just want to make a comment about the fact that Newburyport residents are allowed to go in for free. We should be after we gave them the property. So that was a super valuable piece of property in perpetuity. Because of giving them that property, all the residents should be able to get in there for free. That doesn't mean that getting in there for free entitles them to us continuing to support them. That was the reasoning behind giving them the property, is that they were going to be able to take care of the, it was an organization that was going to be able to take care of it itself. So I think we've been generous enough.
Further discussion, Counselor Agaman?
Yeah, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I want to explain where I part company from colleagues who are going to vote no. So first, I believe that we did convince the NRA last year to condition their deed with certain restrictions, and that was very important to me. I don't want to speak for the president, but he and I, Counselor Zied, and private citizen Bill Harris worked really hard on trying to get that and pointing out the unfairness to the city to get nothing. And really, our beef was with the NRA. And that's, you know, that's water under the bridge. So I do see value in cleaning up the two, two preservation restrictions on title now. One that's held by the Newburyport Historical Commission, which is pretty bare bones.
I think it's only a couple pages long from 2002, and it was registered the next year. And then the Massachusetts Historical Commission has its own, which I already had the conversation with the Chair about, and again, they don't have the staff, they're not really paying attention, so I wasn't thrilled with being subordinate to them. So I'm glad that that's being cleaned up. But the real statement I want to make, and this is going forward, I do agree with my colleagues, we have to be very careful with tax money because it really, it shouldn't be an evergreen where, once you put a deed restriction on your property, you can come back forever. You know, each transaction really should have some consideration. I don't have a case that says that right on point, but that's how I look at these because of the anti-aid amendment, which I take seriously, and that we're really not supposed to give tax money unless we get something for it. And the main case that I look at is the one where the court upheld a write-down of land for a redevelopment project because they figured there were other aspects to redevelopment projects that were benefiting the public. And I really think it has to be transaction by transaction. So I want to make that clear as long as I'm in office, whoever that is. But I'm going to vote yes.
Thank you. Counsel Khan.
Thank you, Council President. I will be supporting this, and having been someone who actually attended the Community Preservation Committee meeting on April 23rd, when they conducted a hearing on this project, there was a lot of discussion about the museum and the reason why the rehab, the rehab for the HVAC climate control needed to be done, was discussed in detail. One of the things that we've talked about is, you know, I think one of my colleagues mentioned, you know, is this the good use of our CPC funds? And for me, you know, looking at what the Custom House Maritime Museum brings in terms of its presence and its kind of stakehold in our city, I see a lot of value. And when I am thinking about the distribution of these funds that we all contribute to, this seems to me like a very viable project, you know, having a lot of my children go there through their field trips through the schools, as well as being able to now have the membership available to all Newburyport residents, which wasn't there before. But I am going to support this. I think it's awesome to have a monument or a building that was designed by the one, the person who did the Washington Monument, as well as the U.S. Treasury Building, Robert Mills. And it's fascinating to hear the history, and this is something that, you know, is iconic for Newburyport. So I support the allocation of the $75,000, even though the original ask is $723,000 to do their entire project. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counsel, no one else? Counsel Tantar is back up.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, I think the Ward Two Counsel mentioned that the difference we had with the NRA over ownership is water under the bridge, I think is the phrase that was used. And for me, I think, I think, I think with three structures that sort of define the city. One is the courthouse up on High Street. A second is the Unitarian Church here on Pleasant, and the third is the Custom House. And the Custom House, those three structures, I think, serve the public good in many different ways. And I just, I would urge you to vote yes on this so that we can assure that the Custom House continues to improve what it provides to the city and can protect the building and protect the artifacts in it. A point that hasn't been mentioned, yes, but it's very relevant, you see it in what Mr. Harris gave us, is that if a community doesn't support its local historic museum, all right, foundations that provide funding for these museums, they're going to look, what? Look at, the local officials don't support this museum. Why should we give it money? All right? So this amount of money is leverage, all right, that will bring other outside foundation money, it is to be hoped, into our museum, and will prove the quality of museum for everyone. I would hope you would vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Z.
I did just have one question that I neglected to ask during committee, and maybe somebody who knows could answer. Because this is part of a larger project, what happens in the case of non-performance? So in other words, if the proponent is unable to raise what we now understand to be the remaining 90% of this project? Maybe Andy could answer, Director Port could answer, or somebody.
If they don't spend the money, he comes back.
I forgot to ask during committee, but it occurred to me, and I wanted to ask, so thank you. Mr. Port, would you approach?
Sure. Well, the applicant for the funds might have to speak to the technical aspects of the work involved, but from the administrative process, we would be able to, once the contract is signed with the city, and once the preservation restriction is in place or up to date, we, the staff, could then distribute funds on a warrant when they've submitted invoices that are consistent with the purposes that they've been funded for. So from our perspective, we wouldn't, we certainly would be interested in knowing and wanting to get involved in the details of how far they've come, are there any conflicts in the work that would, you know, or the funding that would require them to do it only partway? But we would still be obligated to pay up to the amount that's been appropriated, provided it's consistent with the funding purposes. So there'd be a little responsibility on their part to make sure that the rest of the funding is there to do the work completely.
Counsel Junta.
Counsel Z, stole my thunder there on that question. I have that written down in my paper. But when I read through the project summary, it talks about, you know, feasibility study, and then it talks about a scope of work, but have we got any bids from any HVAC contractors? Do we, do we know what this is going to cost? And then I did have, when will it be spent? I know we had an issue going way back when with Fuller Fields, where we appropriated money, I think in two CPAs, but they didn't have enough money to actually do the field, so the money just was sort of held up for a couple of years and not used for other projects. So we just want to make sure that that doesn't happen. But I'm in support of this type of idea, and, you know, just recently, I was at a, well, recently, last week, I was at a museum for cars, looking at doing cooling and humidity controls. And they have to be very, very specific for the artifacts, and this particular building, they had $10 million worth of cars, and it was very important that they kept the humidity and temperature at the, at the right spot. So I am in favor of this, but I feel like I am lacking a little information. I'd like to know if HVAC companies have bid on this. Is $100,000 a good number, or is it going to be a lot more? I'm just curious to find out where we're at.
Mr. Port, can you reply or refer us to someone who can?
Just want to note that Doug Muir is here. He might be able to speak on behalf of the society about whether or not bids have gone out.
Doug, would you approach, please?
Thank you. The best estimate we've been able to come up with so far is just under $800,000 for the project, of which the $75,000 that the CPC has recommended is slightly over 10%. So that's, until we get through the feasibility phase, and the most expensive part of that is the mechanicals, the infrastructure, electrical and plumbing, and the thermal skin for the masonry building. Because otherwise, without a thermal skin, the heat, humidity bleed through the building, and you get back where you started from. So that's, that's our best estimate so far. But until we get through the feasibility phase, we won't have hard costs on the actual construction. So you're quite right in saying there is a possibility that we won't have enough money to do this. But I can assure you, if the city doesn't support it, we won't have any money, as Counselor Tantar said. Because if the city won't support it, we won't get any foundation grants, we won't get any significant donor contributions. People expect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further. Counsel Z.
I do, I do just need to respond. I do think that selling a building that's easily worth over $1 million, in fact, we've put in several hundred thousand for $100 is being generous, and it just seems we keep glossing over that. So next year, we'll have the same discussion, and we're sort of implying implicitly that the residents of Newburyport haven't been generous, they've been more than generous. So I just want to, now, I'm not saying that for myself, I'm saying that for the people that are writing the checks for this. So when people go, when you go out to a donor, let them know that the residents sold this greater than a million dollar worth of building and land for $100 for deed restrictions that we now effectively are agreeing need to be redone. So let's be fair.
Thank you. Further discussion. Hearing none, I think we should take a roll call, vote on this matter.
Roll call for the approval of project number six. Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Z.
No.
Counsel Devlin?
No.
Counsel Ragman?
Yes.
Counsel Junta?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
No.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tantar?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And thank you to the counselors, you all raised good points. Counsel Tantar.
Just a note, I put in the packet, order number 136, full attract Phase II loan order. Last year, the council passed an order that we would not consider loan orders until they had been before us for 30 days. It came in on August 19th, so we will not consider that until the September 30 meeting. So I just wanted to be clear.
Thank you. You all done with budget and finance?
Did I miss?
Seven.
No, we did project number seven.
Number seven. We held number nine.
Done.
Oh.
We held nine, we did one, four.
Well, seven we did earlier.
That's right.
Six and seven, yes.
And you explained what's happening with order 136.
Budget and finance is done, Mr. President.
Thank you. Education.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we met with our friends from the school committee for the first time since summer recess, and they gave us a ton of information, which I provided to you all. I certainly don't have time to go through it all, but I thought I might just give you a couple of fun factoids if I could. So the incoming freshman class is 216 kids. This will actually be the largest class in the school. So between sophomore, junior, and senior, the freshmen will be the largest class. Out of the eighth graders, only 14 of our eighth graders decided to go to some competing school, other than go to Newburyport High School, which I think is pretty, pretty good. Six out of the 14 that decided to go to another school ended up going to Whittier Tech, which, of course, being in the trades does make me happy. We need tradesmen. School choice was open for grades seven, nine, and 10. There were eight slots in the seventh grade, and they were able to register seven kids. In the ninth grade, we had 10 slots open, and they filled all 10, and they actually have three children on a waiting list. It's pretty nice. And then in the 10th grade, they had eight slots, and they registered six kids, and they have two open seats. So I think it shows that, you know, people like our school system and want to come here, so don't always have choice open every year, but the years that we do, we see these slots do fill up. So that's, that's a very good thing. The superintendent has this Friday memo, you've seen it before, everybody has a copy of it here. Always like to pick out one thing on here that I thought was kind of a fun idea. In the NOC in the sixth grade, they have a load-your-lockers night where they invite the sixth graders in before school starts, they show them where their locker is, they show them around the building, they get comfortable. So on the first day of school, they're not, you know, walking around, not knowing where everything is, they've figured the layout of the building, and they know where their lockers and such are. So I thought that was pretty good. They had 133 sixth graders attend that night, so that's pretty fun. The Molen had a back-to-school picnic, sort of the same event, and they had 130 families attend, which is great. It's a testament to our school system that parents are so engaged, and we do things like this, and the parents all come out. So there's some great pictures in here of the, of the NOC gym floor, all done over, beautiful. Mrs. Finney planted, this is starting to sound like a New Hampshire newspaper.
Really is.
Way up in New Hampshire, northern New Hampshire. Mrs. Finney decided to plant a pumpkin patch at the Reson Hand School, so there's a picture of her watering it. I had a great picture of, oh, right here. So then, we were provided with an update of all the things that the custodial maintenance staff, all the projects everybody's working on, and then we had a nice picture in the back of the cupola of what it looked like before, and then the work that's been done so far. So you start to see where your, where your money's going in some of the nice projects they've done. The other thing they mentioned to us is the walkway that goes right down the center of the lawn at the high school, where we do the promenade, that that, that walkway is being done over, it's already done over, one of the two, which is really nice. That's a good focal point for the community. One last thing. In June, we had an antisemitic incident at the high school. So through that, the superintendent has run a program in the Beverly School system that was quite successful. So I provided you with all the information here of the program that they're going to start to institute in the high school, try to educate students and, you know, try to eliminate these things within our school system. And that's what I have for you. I hope you read through all the information that I provided you. A lot of good stuff there. Thank you.
And that last one was particularly important. I know people have been wondering what's come of those meetings.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Good job, Mark.
General Government. I'll ask Counsel Vogel to make the report.
Sure. Well, so I think we'll start off with a motion to approve, but this came out of committee unanimously without recommendation. We had quite the discussion. Counsel Ragman provided a lot of background to his proposal, and I'm going to leave it at that.
And the motion to approve is ordinance 37. Ordinance regarding the city solicitor appointment and duty.
Point of order.
Counsel Tantar.
This requires a motion to remove from committee before a motion to approve.
That was my understanding.
But it's highlighted.
Okay. Motion removed from committee.
Withdraw your motion.
Withdraw my motion. Was there even a second on it?
There was. Not yet.
Okay.
So the motion should be taken out of committee. Second.
Okay. We just did that.
Motion to remove.
And now.
Motion to remove from committee.
Remove from committee. One moment, please.
Motion to remove from committee.
Okay. To remove from committee. Discussion of removing this from committee. Counsel Ragman.
Yeah, I think I can short-circuit this. I'm very impatient to correct what I think all of us that have been on the council know is a nagging problem, which is the weird loyalties of the city solicitor and so on.
Counsel?
Yeah.
Could you hold that until we get something on the floor for discussion?
I know, but I'm building that. But I'm going to suggest that we not bring this out of committee tonight, because the chief administrative officer asked me directly if, you know, we could give time to the mayor to make a statement. Again, I, you know, the mayor knew this was coming out, but I gather it's very important to her, she's on vacation, I don't know what she's going to say, but out of courtesy, I don't have a problem keeping this in committee. I guess, you know, there's nothing immediately going to happen, we can keep waiting. But I just want to make clear, the only thing that I'm waiting for is I want to give the mayor an opportunity to speak, and on that basis, perhaps we should not bring it out of committee.
Motion to remove, withdraw.
One moment.
Withdraw my motion.
You're withdrawing your motion.
Was there a second to?
There was.
I don't know whose second it is. Yes.
Did you know you seconded?
Yes, I did. I'm just debating. Okay, I'll withdraw my second.
For context, I have no problem withholding this. The committee did vote to take it out of committee, but if the members, and I'm looking at the two other members of the committee, feel that that's advisable, I agree that it's worth holding in committee, so we'll keep it there until our next meeting.
I think with respect to the mayor, yes, we can wait.
Thank you. I agree. Thank you, Counsel. There's nothing else in general government that we can act on right now. The clerk might want to say something about the election equipment, however, as long as it's on our agenda.
I believe at the next meeting, we probably should take it out. I hope general government has a right, has an opportunity to, to discuss it. We have our election, the Ward Six election, this coming Tuesday, the 17th. We're using the old current equipment for that. The idea is to use the new equipment for the November one, and I think with timing, we have, we have time, but we need to vote on that order 135 soon.
It's not 60 days?
It's 30 days, 30. But in any event, I would feel.
Thanks to the clerk for that update. License and permits. The Chair is no longer here.
We don't have a Chair.
Doesn't exist. License and permits has been.
Leave it.
Anything you want to bring out? Second.
I enjoy being the Chair of Public Safety so much that.
Neighborhood City Services. Planning and Development.
Yes, motion to remove appointment of Mark Moore. Appointment, second.
Move to second.
Point of order. Out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Thank you, Counsel.
Don't go too far.
Second, or was there already a second? The motion was to remove from committee and seconded by Counsel, I heard someone on the left, I believe it was Counsel Tantar, or was it Counsel Vogel?
It was me.
Okay, Counsel Tantar. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to second. Discussion, Counsel Ragman.
Yes, we had an opportunity for a public hearing, it's 7 o'clock. There was one person who spoke, Mr. Moore gave a statement. This is a reappointment, I should say. He's game for Moore. He was an alternate, and now he would be taking a full-time position, and the committee recommended his approval 3-0.
Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this matter.
Roll call of appointment, Michael Moore. Counsel Vogel.
Yes.[1781.87]
Counsel Aziz.
Yes.
Counsel Devlin is recused for the record. Counsel argument.
Yes.
Counsel Junta.
Yes.
Counsel Khan.
Yes.
Counsel McCauley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel Shan.
Yes.
Counsel Tanta.
Yes.
Counsel Connel.
Yes.
Appointment approved.
Would someone search for Mr. Devlin? Oh, sure he is. Thank you, Counselor. Anything else in Planning and Development?
Yes, at the request of a member of the public, Ms. Lambert, I just wanted to explain where we are on waterfront west. It's been a long road, so it's probably time well spent. So here's the situation. There's really three steps, three steps, before any owner at that property could pull a building permit. And the three steps are, in order, they need to have a revised zoning ordinance so that they can build higher than what the current overlay zoning permits. Second, they need a master plan to be approved, which is a form of special permit. It's a discretionary permit granted by the city, and I'll get to who grants it in a second. And there is a right to appeal that. It's a permit, so it's not legislation. It's a discretionary approval. And the third step is site plan and design review, which will be handled by the planning board with no involvement by the city council at all, because the design standards and site plan standards will have already been baked into the previous two decisions, both the zoning ordinance and the master plan. And then, under Massachusetts law, it is possible for a planning board to deny site plan and architectural review, but you have to leave a path forward for the applicant to find a way to get in compliance. So for example, if you say, you know, this design doesn't meet our standards, you have to give them a chance to make it right. So that really comes at the end. Okay, so next week, September 19th, we have a joint public hearing with the planning board. The public hearing is already, under state law, is required for any zoning legislation, so we're going to spend time next week. It's not unlike the hearing we had, I think it was last September or August, but the format is different. Andy Port, the planning director, will present what the proposal is. It's sponsored by President Connel. It's about a 20-page zoning ordinance. I will also highlight what we went through in the ad hoc committee, because that was what we did in between last year's hearing on a different version of the project and next week's hearing. And the ad hoc meeting was really to go over, okay, what has to go into this ordinance, and I'll go through that, including height, parking, open space, so on, floodplain. And then, we're going to take testimony from the public. That's really the meat of the meeting, is to take testimony. Only at the very end are we going to give the property owner an opportunity to speak. We do not want them to start with a presentation. We feel that's premature, but we do want to give them an opportunity at the end to correct any misstatements or misperceptions. It's only fair. They know the property. It's theirs. But again, the hearing on the 19th is just about the zoning, not about the master plan approval, and certainly not about site plan and design review. Then, we have tentatively scheduled a follow-up meeting, because we don't think we'll be able to deliberate after taking all that testimony. We think everyone will be worn out. So Bonnie Sontag, the chair of the planning board, and I tentatively have the 26th as a follow-up date. That could always move, so that we can deliberate, again, just on the zoning, trying to get the zoning right. And the question is, before the planning board, what is your recommendation, and what is the three member of Planning and Development, what is their recommendation to the full council? But the full council decides. They are the legislature, so they don't have to take the recommendation of either the planning board or the committee. They do what they do, and the zoning is eight votes. To answer the question on public input, not only can anybody speak, and we'll have to do two minutes, I'm afraid, because there's so many people, but you can always write. And we've already, Andy Port and I have already been collecting written comments, and they're all PDF'd and put up on the website eventually, so that every counselor can see them. Only after the zoning passes will there even be a mechanism to do the master plan, because there's no zoning that even allows this sort of master plan setup right now. What is a master plan? The idea is a whole site. I think it's five or six acres, rather than building by building. It's the whole shoot-and-match, so you can look at it holistically, and it's really about what is the basic meat of the development? How many thousand square feet? How many dwelling units? How many parking spaces? How many hotel rooms? That's the meat of it. And then that becomes a vested right. So in the master plan process, which we have to talk about when we talk about the zoning, there would, of course, be input by the planning board. It's not maybe as explicit in the zoning right now as we would like. We can make it more explicit, but the planning board always gives their advice, because there are experts to the council. But again, the council would decide why. It's an incredibly momentous project. This is not your average special permit for just, you know, an extra unit. I mean, we're talking about 215 potential units, 80 to 100 guest room hotel, so it seems something that should go to the city council. We can debate that. That's the way the draft is written. Again, once you're all through that, and that's a lot to do by the end of the term, but we can do it, because we've spent so many years to get here, I believe, then it's really up to the applicant when they want to go forward if they're approved. But they have to get through step one, they have to get through step two, or they'd never get to step three, which is site plan and architectural review. And again, I want to emphasize, we always take letters. There's no page limit. It's really up to you. You can submit it to the chair of the planning board, to me as chair of the committee, to Andy Port. I recommend all three. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Perhaps there are questions from counselors about the process as it's unfolding. I think that was a very thorough description of where we're headed. Hearing none. Thank you, Counselor. Public safety.
Yes. Just a moment. See if it came on. Communication 174 from August 19th, 2019, Block Party Otis Place.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Counsel Devlin.
It was recommended 2 to 0 to approve this.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Have a good party. Anything else?
Motion to approve Communication 175 from August 19th, 2019.
Second.
I heard a second. Discussion. Counsel Devlin.
This is St. Vincent de Paul Walk. They've done it for years, and I think Tom and I would get us communicated if they couldn't do it, so it came out of committee 2 to 0.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's done.
Motion to -- which one did we do first? The parking?
134.
134. Motion to remove Order Number 134.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counsel Devlin.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to the sponsor, but generally, the gist of the ordinance is to let the workers, employees on employee passes, use the garage. And we had a good discussion with the parking clerk and the head, Mary Jo, the head of the parking enforcement, Counsel Shan was there, Counsel argument, and Matt Cougar.
Further discussion. Counsel argument.
Just a little more color, because I'm the sponsor, and most of the downtown parking, of course, is in Ward II. So those of you wondering why I always talk about parkings, because it's mostly in Ward II. So you may recall, when you approve the parking garage, for many of us, the key was building the parking garage would open up the waterfront to widen the green space. The worry was that if you simply take parking off of the central waterfront and expand the park, and don't have anywhere for those cars to go, that's not a good move for downtown, either residents, visitors, or workers. So we got through the summer season. In fact, the garage, under the planning board approval, was conditioned on 100 spaces being taken off. It wasn't directed at the NRA, because the planning board had no jurisdiction over the NRA. It was directed against really the planning department, saying you cannot open this garage unless there are some spaces coming off. So, long story short, we're finally ready to do that. Why now? Because it's time to get used to changing the parking pattern. And the Parking Advisory Committee met on this last month and talked about it at length, and one of the things we talked about is, okay, if we're displacing employee parking from NRA East Lot, and it's 95 spaces on the East Lot, and 30 spaces on the NRA West Lot, but I don't have the numbers right in front of me. I gave them to the committee, there's still going to be 128-odd spaces left. So it's not a complete elimination. This is not a black-and-white thing. It's merely to take some spaces off and allow them to relocate in the garage. So you take off 125 on the waterfront spaces. The garage holds 207. So we debated, well, do we also allow residents to go into the garage? And the reason we, at the PAT, the Parking Advisory Committee, and then also at the committee below today, we're not doing that, is because there are 8,000, 7,000, 8,000, something like that, resident stickers. And we're worried that if we start off by letting residents use the garage with their $18-a-year pass, we're going to overwhelm the garage. We don't know that. But we do know that we're displacing these workers, and they need somewhere to go, so we're going to start there. So the ordinance that's in front of you now, I'm sorry, the Order 134, because we can do parking by order, simply changes the list of available places that you can go if you have a quarterly employee permit. And they are strategically placed. There's some in the NRA East Lot still. There's now going to be the Titcomb Garage. There's some in the Prince Place and Hale Court Lot. So it's sort of evenly distributed around downtown in a triangle. And so I hope you'll support this. We did put a lot of thought into it. We think it's the right way to go. If this fall and winter, we find that there's still capacity in the garage, and that there's really no harm in allowing residents to park there as well, we can absolutely revisit that, but we don't want to start that way, because we want to be fair to the employees.
Thank you. Counsel Aziz.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just going to jump in and just get right into it. I disagree that, you know, the garage has been such a long process, and frankly, I'm not sure we ever had a plan, and I think it's coming home to roost now, because we still don't exactly know what we're doing. So in light of that, I'm just going to advocate for the residents, and I'm going to make a motion to strike in the Titcomb Street Garage and E4. So in other words, allowing the resident parking pass to work in the garage now. We've gotten to the point where we don't even look at financials anymore when we do these, which to me is a sign that we're just basically making public policy on feel. So the way I feel is that we have a large parking program, a large system, and that system is comprised of a variety of lots, offering different product sort of feels to them, but we're moving in a direction of simplifying to lower number of permits, potential permits. And so I don't see a reason at this point why we wouldn't just fold the garage into the system. And if a resident would say opt to park in the garage instead of parking in the Green Street Lot, you're freeing up a space in the Green Street Lot, which generally, a lot of our discussions end up centering around the Green Street Lot, because it seems to be the most desirable, actually, for everybody, visitors and employees. And I think this has been a longstanding question, whether residents can use the garage, and in addition to the question of whether or not they could use it during a snow emergency. But I'm just going to put it out there for discussion and let the council have at it.
Could you restate your amendment, then, please?
Sure, Mr. President. Motion to strike portion of E4, which states in the Titcomb Street Garage.
Thank you. Second. And seconded by Counsel O'Brien. Discussion of the amendment. Counsel argument.
Yeah, I remember that residents can park in the Green Street Lot, but workers cannot. So if you're an employee, you cannot park all day in the Green Street Lot. So we're trying to reconcile three different populations. We've always, and so that has always been the plan. We don't know exact projections of who's going to go in the garage, and I realize that some may take fault with that, but it's really impossible to know, I believe. I don't think that's reasonable for us to know. So just remember that if we -- residents will still be able to park with their $18-a-year permit in the Green Street Lot, but employees will be displaced from the NRA East Lot with nowhere else to go. And I don't think that's a good recipe, because we've also had to tighten up the two-hour residential parking all around the parking garage. And I really don't want to re-leticate the approval of the garage. It's there now. And I also want to make sure that no one casts this as an attempt to, you know, make the garage look good, because it's not going to look good. These are quarterly permits by employees that we're hoping to use the garage. So this is not a big moneymaker. It's not a money-making scheme. It's a capacity scheme. It's a scarce resource that we're trying to allocate. So I would urge not approving the amendment.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counsel Tanta.
Yeah, I attended the Parking Advisory Committee meeting and actually raised the issue as to whether or not residents could, passes could be used in the garage, because I was thinking exactly the same way as the Ward I counselor, which is, you know, we get more money from people parking in the Green Street Lot than we do, and so if people moved over there. However, the parking manager was really convinced that if we reduce the spaces on the waterfront lots, that people who, employees who work in the city really would need a place to park. We're eliminating the, we would cause some hardships to a lot of the downtown merchants who, and people work downtown in general, who need a place to park. So I thought the committee and the Ward II counselor has very adequately stated it. We're going to see what happens this winter, and depending on what happens, we could change it. It's not forever, but just for the short run, given the possibility that we could have employees show up on a January morning and have the lot full, and not be able to place and not be able to get to work, and that would be a problem. So I think a little caution is in order, and I'm going to vote on the order as it exists.
Counsel Khan.
Thank you, Counsel for President. I have to agree with the counselor from Ward I. I do also hear a lot about the garage and resident parking permits, and given, again, how much traction and parking there is there right now, why is that not available? However, with that said, hearing the conversation, understanding that there are a lot of these aspects, but I have to say, a lot of this is speculation. So I would, I don't know if you want to put it in here, but I would want to revisit this after, I think, as the counselor from Ward IV said. I just want to make sure it's on the record that we're communicating about these parameters we're really trying to assess, because I feel like we have a parking-related ordinance or order at every meeting. So I really feel like there needs to be a lot of information, not only just kind of gathered, but also communicated to the residents, so that they can understand when we are making changes, what is the reason, and what are we really trying to look for? And if we really don't know, we should say that, because I really just want to make sure that we are outlining that there is, this has not been easy, I think, of a system to execute. And I do, I have not gone to a Parking Advisory Committee meeting yet, but I do plan on going at some point. But I feel like one of the things I would ask is that as we sit down and look at this from a bigger picture, we really try to really think about what are we trying to do for not only the residents, visitors, but the employees now? Who are all the stakeholders and maybe the best way to address it? Finally, because we make all these changes, I would also want to know how I could communicate and how are we communicating to residents as we make these modifications? And I know there is a cost to that as well in terms of updating the PDFs and communicating to residents on changes like this. So, again, I would like to see minimal changes, just mainly also from the communication perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing the others, I'm back to Counselor Zede.
Just a couple of things. Number one is, you know, the garage is just, it just has not been an attractive product. Unfortunately, we're running a business here in this regard. It's a, it's a product for which we ask people to pay money. And we have been taking this odd stepwise approach. And the restrictions, the two-hour restrictions we've put in were an attempt frankly to, you know, funnel people into it. That really hasn't worked, in my humble opinion. And the garage has been fairly underperforming in terms of finances if we are going to talk about money. And so now we're at, we're at this point where we're taking 125 spaces off the waterfront, and now we're still trying to keep certain groups out of the garage, holding on to this sort of idea that it will just magically become a more attractive product. It's a product and a system that's being compared to others. You can pay a little bit more at the Green Street Lot, but you're closer to the action. We've learned a lot about that in Parking Advisory, that's attractive. You can park at other lots that have other benefits. And yes, we talk about the benefits maybe on a rainy day of the garage, but that hasn't, haven't been enough rainy days, I guess, to justify parking. What we have is a pricing, we have pricing problems, right? We have, and that's actually what's going to be addressed or discussed in 137, which is basically folding the garage into the existing employee pass with a moderate increase. So we're going from 160 bucks a year to $200 a year, and we're throwing in the garage. So I, I'm sympathetic to the at-large Counselor's comment that, you know, it doesn't seem like we're taking a holistic approach, but frankly, in the three years I've been at it, we failed to do that. So we're just doing this as we go. And we're sort of like, well, we don't know, we need to wait another three, so we keep passing these things that expire September 30th, October 1st, December 1st, and then we do more two-hour zones. And it's not yielding the result, which is that we hope we're pushing people into the garage. That's not happening. So with all that being said, it is built. So residents might as well be able to use it. And it doesn't make sense to keep them out of the garage, again, if it is seeming to be one of our least attractive products, given its proximity, and maybe over time that changes, maybe over time downtown changes. But right now, this is where we stand. And the last thing I will say is, the parking consultant has been helpful, but just to be clear, his attitude has been from day one that resident passes need to disappear. They need to be severely curtailed and removed. And when we originally received his recommendations, which we also did not follow, he suggested essentially raising the price of resident passes until they met employee passes. So we are truly flying by the seat of our pants, and I don't, I'm not seeing a reasonable argument to prohibit or restrict residents from using the pass in what has not been the most attractive product in the system.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Junta, and then Counselor Ackerman.
I just want to remind everybody is, you know, where the garage is built now, that was employee parking for the folks across the street. Then we built the garage, we took the spaces across the street away, we made them into some beautiful planters. Then we made two-hour parking all the way around, so then none of the employees could go there. Now we're talking about taking the employee parking away, the 125 spots will include employee parking there. And now we're saying, okay, well, it's best to put the employees in a clean, safe, dry environment so they can park long-term, because the garage is a long-term parking lot. And now we're here, we're saying, well, why don't we just open it up to the 18,000 residents? So I'm losing focus here. I think the focus is, is we want to, we've taken spots away from employees, we want to put them in a safe, dry place. We want them to be able to know where they're going to park. We're going to give them some reasonable pricing, which is going to come up next. And I'm not ready to open it up to the whole world yet. Yes, we don't have a plan, but this is probably the most reasonable step forward right now to take care of the employees. And yes, I voted for the garage to build a park. I ran for City Council to build a park. I want those parking spots gone. I want to build a park. And those parking spots are going to be going into the garage. But the reality is, is we've got to take care of these employees. We're slowly taking all of their parking spots away, but we haven't given them anything back. And this is it right here. So I'm not ready to open the garage open to everybody yet. I like a staged approach, but we do have to address what we're doing to the employees.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ackerman.
Yeah, I'll be briefer. Look, I don't think it's a product, okay? I just want to clarify that the centralized parking system that the city administers is not a for-profit, it's not a business. It's a public good that we're providing. Why? Because when we made the decision not to tear down downtown and do a zaire with surface parking, we said, all right, we need to figure out a way that people can come here and park their cars without each business providing parking. We have that too on Story Avenue. So I just want to be clear. It may be frustrating to think, well, who could run a business this way? It's not a business. That's, it's just not. We're not, you know, we don't even charge really full freight. So it was very difficult, but Counselor Cameron and I, at the end of the 2017, we added a fee finally. If you, if you don't provide your parking and you have a shortfall, you have to pay $7,500. We knocked that down from $15,000. No business would take $7,500. They wouldn't even take $15,000. They would be asking $50,000, $60,000 a space. It's not a business. Second, it is true that we're not following a thorough plan, we're not following John Burke's plan, but I agree with the Counselor from Ward One. I didn't agree with everything that the consultant was saying either. He didn't actually want the garage, as I recall, to be used by all-day parkers for workers. He wanted it to be maximized for visitors, whereas the council, as a body, we thought Green Street should be maximized for visitors. So we already have differed from him a bit. So there is a method to this madness. It's not completely random. It boils down to what the Counselor from Ward Five is saying. We have to move cars to build a park. And whether you like it or not, that ship is sailed. We're building a park, guys. So cars have to move, this is where they have to go.
Thank you, Counselor. I believe Counselor Vogel and Counselor Shan.
I'll try to be brief. I think when we opened up the garage, he can remind me, it's only been many years, but it was very cold that day, as I recall. So it must have been sometimes this early or winter or so, or in the winter. So it hasn't been that long. We're, this is new. We're developing a process here. We still haven't changed our traffic flows. We've been looking at the traffic flows based around the garage coming in. We're, it may not be the most perfect way that we're doing it. This is government. And government certainly is not perfect, as we often consider that question. So I stand against the idea of putting out the amendment and allowing everybody to use it. I'd like to see what happens. I like the idea of getting the cars off the central waterfront, et cetera, et cetera. And I think we just need to take the steps. The parking garage, I think, is not particularly fully utilized yet because we haven't really marketed it. We haven't marketed it because there's so many pieces missing. The, you know, our new traffic flows, where we, how are we going to, are we going to go up Green Street to get out of town? I think that would be great. But we haven't addressed it yet. So we've got to put these things in place. Marketing's a process, it's not an event. It's going to take a little bit of time for people to understand when they come into town that the garage is there. We just need to work it. And I think this is a good step of working it. I disagree that we need to open it up to everybody.
Counselor Shan.
Thank you. I agree with my fellow Ward Five Counselor. I do think that we need to crawl, walk and run here, and I think we're still in the crawling stages. And I agree, if we're taking parking spots off the waterfront, then we need to make sure that the employees have a safe place to park. And I think the garage is the place to start. So let's just continue crawling and we will get there.
Thank you, Counselor. Again, on the amendment, Counselor Zede.
Yeah, just a couple thoughts. Number one is, this non-business business that we're running has a mortgage of about $400,000. So I remind my Counselors of that, since it's a non-business business. Number two is, the two-hour restrictions that we have placed, many of which I supported, I supported to protect the neighborhoods that are getting bludgeoned frankly by this whole thing coming around. So the two-hour, it just, it's very circular to me. We are imposing the two-hour restrictions, and then we are blaming the two-hour restrictions for the problems that they create. So that's a lack of strategy, in my opinion. And just two other things. One is, when you say this is government and we sort of, we can't do any better, it's frustrating. I don't think residents want to hear that. Not after, you know, all the arguments about we waited 40 years to build a garage, and this is the planning we're doing, as we're sort of just figuring it out. My question for the parking clerk through the President, if I may, is, can you go through the reduction of parking on the waterfront? The inventory that will be remaining? So in other words, when you take 125 off, you are reducing employee parking by X spaces, but you may also be reducing resident spaces because some of those spaces down in the East Lot are... So just to give people an understanding, when you say you're displacing employees, again, I think partially artificially by our own hand, we are also talking about resident spaces that are utilized. So can you go through the numbers and just tell us, 125 come off, and then if you allow employees in the garage and you don't, you know, what's the net change basically of total available resident spaces and total available employee spaces in the system?
Okay. If the parking clerk doesn't mind.
No, I don't mind. I think Counselor Ackerman already gave us the gross numbers on NRA West and East. In the West Lot, there were 89, there are 30 removed, there are 59. Roughly 18 of that would be employees. Then on the NRA East Lot, there's 223, 90 of which, you mentioned 95, but I believe it's 90, are removed, which takes us down to 137, which you then add back the 59, you're at 196 between the East and the West Lot. The employees share those lots with the residents. The garage itself is 207. We have right now, in terms of permits outstanding, just to give you the overall perspective, between seniors and residents, we have 5,816 out. That's for lots, not for the garage. We have 371 total active employees out. That's between, there's 265 yearly and 106 active quarterly. The proposal is to take those 371 and fold them into a quarterly at 50. That's coming up next, I'm jumping ahead. So that's speculation until I see what the council does. I don't know if you want me to continue?
No, the numbers are, thank you. I just wanted the numbers coming off and that, sorry, if, just that we're taking off spaces in those quantities, and they are shared spaces between employees and residents. You are attempting to replicate the employee spaces, but you are not replicating the resident spaces. That's my point. Thank you.
Further discussion? All right, then we'll vote on the amendment.
The motion to, motion to strike E4, which is the Titcomb Garage restriction on residents. Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Ackerman?
No.
Counselor Junta?
No.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Counselor Tanta?
No.
Counselor Connell?
No.
Receiving four yeses, motion fails.
Now we revert to the initial?
The motion approved was on the floor.
Which was?
Motion to approve Order 134 with the Titcomb Street Garage added essentially in E4.
Is there any further discussion on, thank you, on this motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote on Order 134. Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
No.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Ackerman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
No.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Counselor.
134, leading us to 135, Mr. President. I'm sorry, 137.
All right, is there anything else?
Yes. Motion to remove Ordinance 137.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
It's a remove.
Oh, motion remove, excuse me. No discussion on removal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Again, same participants. I'm going to let Counselor Ackerman, but the gist of this one is, as the clerk and parking clerk alluded to, the, there's a new proposed quarterly employee fee of $50. The second thing in here that I'm going to mention, this came out with no recommendation in large part because of the second issue is, it's going to move the residence fee from $15 to $18, reflecting the $3 surcharge that had been getting paid by the residents anyway when they paid for these. I'll leave it at that and leave it to the sponsor to explain further. I'll wait for my, the discussion.
Further discussion, Counselor Ackerman.
So I sponsored this one as a companion. We also discussed this at the Parking Advisory Committee. This is an order, it doesn't get codified. So unlike the previous order, which actually gets codified in municipal code, this is basically a fee schedule, which we can change at any time. We adopted a similar fee schedule early this spring, I think it was March or so, can't remember. So the first change you already heard was, we've had for many years a stated fee for residents annually of $15, but in practice, over the last two years, calendar years, my understanding is, we've been charging a $3 surcharge for processing and passing that on. And the feeling being that it, by the parking clerk, that it's still a bargain, that you can park for a year for $18 for up to three hours at a time, and the residents are used to it. I'm the one who actually suggested at the PAC Parking Advisory Committee that we just put it in so that no one's surprised. I just think it's the right thing to do. We've been collecting it and might as well put people on notice. The other material change to our current fees is the, you already heard about it, ad nauseam, the employee quarterly permit. Right now, we did $40 a quarter. We're bumping it to 50. If you want to look at it for a year, you can, but the reason we do quarterly is because oftentimes employers bump up their employees for summer if they are in the tourist trade, especially retail and restaurant. So they don't really want a year-round permit, they just want the quarterly. And it went from 40 to 50, an increase of $10 for those three months because we figured we're giving you a better product, to use the word of business. That's the idea. Now, there's a little bit of confusion because residents have the ability to buy a monthly pass. Again, you can't use your $18, we just debated that, and it failed four to seven. But you can, if you want to pay a premium, pay $60 per month to park in the garage. And I believe the parking clerk can tell you how many people we have who've done that. It's less, fewer than five, right?
It's actually 11 right now.
11, I take it back, 11. I don't think there are any other changes. For example, this council previously, and we're holding steady on that, has priced the lots in two tiers. So the waterfront trust lot, the NRA West, the NRA East, the State Street, and the, and Titcomb Garage as well, are only a dollar an hour for a visitor. Whereas the Green Street, the Prince Place, and the Hales Court are a premium at a buck 50. Not much more, but the idea being, it's more closer to the action. That's not changing. Also violations, it's often come up on this floor that a considerable amount of our revenue, which is now running, Richard, a million dollars a year, a million dollars a year is our revenue. With, just to put it into context, we have a $400,000 bond to pay. Our violations are 25 bucks across the board. We've argued before whether they should be higher or lower, and we're not changing that in this proposal. Still going to be 25 bucks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Devlin?
Yes, just to give some background of why it came out, at least from my perspective, without recommendation. I had asked the parking clerk, with the other fees, there is still a $3 surcharge, but the city eats it.
Yeah.
So it didn't seem fair to me. We spent a considerable amount of time debating the increase from, what was it, $5 or $10 to 15? And we're actually been charging 18, and this is nobody's fault. There has been griping about it. People weren't happy when they came in, they said, hey, it's supposed to be $15. That was the whole point of, is adjusting this to make it so that it actually showed, we voted on what actually is being charged. to make it so that it actually showed, we voted on what actually is being charged. I just don't think it's fair that we're eating it in other places, and the residents are taking out the chin, you know, harkening back to our last debate on the last order. The parking clerk did say that it would cost $16,000 if we ate that $3 fee, but we're eating it in other places, so that costs us money. We just heard this is a $1 million, non-revenue generating. It's not supposed to be a business. It's not supposed to maximize its dollars. So I don't know why we're doing... I would support, you know, and I'll hear from other people before I make the motion, but I would support a motion, and then I would support these fees if there was a motion to keep the resident at $15. And we couldn't carry the last sign to allow them to park in the garage, but that's probably the biggest complaint I hear about, related to the garage, is residents who can't find parking downtown as easily anymore. So I just, and I don't want them to take it off the chin anymore.
I want to hear, I'll make the motion to so amend, to keep it at $15.
Seconded. Moved in seconded. So, discussion of that amendment. Councillor Zede?
Yeah, I just want to rise in support. I think, you know, just from a process point, when we pass a fee, when it leaves here, that's the intention, is that's what the end user is going to pay. There's no room for processing fees and so forth. That all has to come out of it in the discussion. So when we talked about 15, it needed to be 15. And, you know, it used to be, we used to do two-year cycles. Now we're doing one-year cycles. So the increase was actually, not just that the rate went up per year, but also that we went down, you know, now we're doing $18 a year instead of what effectively was 5. And I would just suggest that, you know, with the digital system, we do have flexibility, and maybe we should return back to two years at this price to reduce that processing cost, if it would make a difference. And that's, maybe the parking clerk could speak to better than me. But that's a discussion for another day. I'm in support of 15. That's what we haggled about, and that's where we landed.
Further discussion on the amendment. Hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? The ayes have it. Now, we revert to the initial proposal. The fee structure as described by councillor Aigman. Mr. Clerk?
May I just speak?
Please do.
Okay. But we are now about to vote on the Order 137, as amended from 18 to 15. But the parking is scheduled to be taken off the waterfront on the 16th of September, and these fees do not go into effect until the 30th, which leaves me for two weeks of limbo. I wonder if someone might consider.
Motion to amend the change to September 16.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion.
Now, that's my error. The clerk asked me to do that, and I plum forgot.
Fair enough. Further discussion. Hearing none on this amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jeez, Richard, you should propose everything.
I don't push my luck.
We are back to the initial proposal on the floor regarding fees. Councillor Zede?
Yeah, I just wanted to offer my thoughts on this one. I am going to support this with the $15. It's funny, because a couple of months ago, we had a flurry of proposals. One was one I brought forward to reduce the employee down to 60. And we had a Parking Advisory Committee, and I said, "I think we're heading for $25 a month." And I got some pretty hairy eyeballs in the crowd from that. And you guys have beaten me. This is $16 a month. What a deal for the employee pass. I just want to remind a couple of historical things that I remember. One is, when we first brought out sort of the first raft of pricing changes we proposed, or it was proposed, to make the employee pass 250. And that failed, you know, and we went back to the 160. And I won't say I lose lots of sleep over it, but I do lose sleep at 371 employee passes being sold. It just seems dismally low to me, given the number of employees that there are in the downtown area, that we're still only selling less than 400 passes. So I hope that employees will receive this well and say, "Okay, I'm getting additional value because now I can use the garage." But I really do question, you know, unless we're going to... And I had this discussion recently with a resident jokingly about how far out into Ward 1 would you have to do two-hour parking before you stem the bleeding downtown? And I shudder to think about that. But it's deeply concerning to me that it's still not attractive enough, even at the 160. And I can't tell if that's a function of the pricing, or it's a function of the hardship of the folks that were asking to pay, who maybe were living on minimum wage and so forth. So this is still, again, I supported the last one because this was a step in the right direction. That one was. It was going down. And this one's going down too. So maybe I should revise my expectations to $10 a month. I don't know. We'll see.
Further discussion, councillor Aigman?
Yeah, I just want to, I'm responsible for 95% of the two-hour resident parking because most of it is in Ward 2. So let me tell you that people do not always act rationally. And it's not just because they're minimum wage workers. There are some very well-heeled financial planning people that they want to pay nothing, okay? It just doesn't matter. You price it at $1, you price it as 25 cents. If they can park for nothing on, say, Park Street, which I'm getting complaints from, because we made two-hour parking on Harris Street, the people on Harris Street are now going on Park Street and setting off their car alarms at 7:00 in the morning and annoying all the residents. So that's why I'm bringing it in. Yes, I admit it. It's not a rational decision that they're making. They have the money. It's that it's free. So you've got to count for human nature. Please bear with me on that.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the proposal as amended? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well. Is there anything else in committee?
No. Nothing further from Public Safety?
Public Utilities.
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you. Motion to approve Communication 177, having already been in the packet.
Seconded. Discussion. Councillor Zede?
Thank you. So you're probably all fairly familiar at this point with Next Amp. We just did one of these recently, so let me give you the rundown real quick. By stroke of luck, or whatever the case may be, Next Amp decided to approach the city with two additional projects that we could be included on.
Point of order, I think I'm going to choose myself on this, right? Are we taking action? This is the Next Amp content?
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry.
I'm sorry. I should have picked that up too. Thank you, councillor.
So we went through this process recently with the two projects. Molly Ettenborough, the department head for sustainability, went through the contract line by line. It is exactly the same. So we get to benefit from the fruits of our labor last time around. This project, this contract in particular, has actually two contracts, one for a solar field in Sutton, Massachusetts, and one for Marlborough, Massachusetts. And if you remember from our last discussion, the city was attaining about 50% of its energy from solar. With this, they're guessing it's between 55 and 60, hopefully a little bit closer to the 60% range. Just as last time, the credits will be, as they always have to be, have to be assigned to a specific meter. They will be assigned to the school meters. The school committee did meet and vote on that. Why not? It's savings. Good for the schools. So it came out of committee three to nothing. Everybody was comfortable with the contract last time around, and I trust the same. But if there's any questions, we can try and answer them. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Rules committee?
Nothing to add. I'm sorry. Nothing.
Okay, we are going to move into executive session for the purposes of... And the clerk will read the purpose.
It's discussing litigation with respect to 193 High Street zoning appeal. Mr. President, do you want to tell?
We will not be coming back into public session.
And do you want to take good...
After the exec. But I'm going to reverse the order of events so that you can hear good of the order before you leave. And I know you're sitting around waiting for that. Thank you, councillor, for turning. Good of the order, and then we will go into our executive session. Councillor Vogel?
Yes, thank you. I was approached by the Link House, and they asked me to come forward and to let those of you that are glued to the television watching this, to save the date, Thursday, the 26th of September, they'll have an event, the Links of Hope event. It's up at Blue Ocean, starts at 6:00 p.m. It's an event that, of course, supports the Link House and, you know, the residents there and the efforts to continue to support them. So they asked me to mention it, so circle the date on September 26. It's the 17th annual fundraiser. And more information can be found at the Link House as well.
Thank you, councillor. Good of the order, councillor Tanta?
Yeah, I have two things. First of all, I would like to thank and recognize the Exchange Club for organizing and sponsoring the Field of Honor. If those of you don't know, individuals can purchase a flag that you see in the mail. The proceeds from that go to support scholarships on the part of the Exchange Club. And it's also, you know, quite a moving experience in memory to service people who've served the country in the military and to first responders predominantly, and to commemorate those who have died during 9/11. And this year's speaker was William Shuttleworth, who walked across the country. I think you read about him. He was extraordinarily articulate, moving, and I'd just like to thank him. I think he really represents what is best about Newburyport, and it was a wonderful event. Secondly, I would like to thank the chief administrative officer. I'd like to thank DPS, Tony and Jamie. I'd like to thank the police department. I asked them, with the help of Christine Wallace, who is, will be Ward 4 councillor, to pay attention on the first day of school to High Street. There were no sidewalks. And parents and young children could possibly be trying to get to the Brezner Hand. And everyone did a spectacular job, including the superintendent of schools. I left him out. And there were no problems. I didn't get one email. One email, and I think everything went fine. So I'd like to thank them.
Thank you, councillor. Good of the order, councillor Zede?
A couple of things too. First is, I didn't want to interrupt the consent, but I want to thank the Emma Andrews volunteers who were reappointed tonight. I actually really enjoy going to those meetings, which I'm able to get to often, but not as often as I'd like, and they care very deeply about it. And if you have an opportunity or haven't been down there in a while, they're always good events. They're doing a lot of things for kids, and it's just nice. I also wanted to thank the candidates who put in their names today and congratulate our new councillor and councillor for the next couple of years with us for joining the ride. And the last thing is just a reminder to folks that Wednesday, there'll be a planning and development meeting about the Brown School. I've been out telling everybody, every meeting that there ever was, so please come and continue. I'm still hopeful for a vote on September 30. Thank you.
Thank you. Good of the order. Mr. Cogan?
I just want to correct a statement that I made a few hours ago concerning High Street.
No, stripes are going to be there forever.
Well, actually, you know, I got a text from Jamie Tikolo as we were talking, and he, I don't know if he's watching, or his ears were honed in, but we are going to have a third party take a look at the asphalt before we re-line. I think we're no longer going to take this contractor at their word as far as the removal of the asphalt. So we will delay that painting. So I just wanted to put that on the record, and I've already made the changes on the website as well.
Those of you who have examined the erased asphalt are scratching their heads and wondering. Thank you. Councillor Devlin?
I just need to recuse myself. But for the good of the order, I do want to congratulate the Ward 4 councillor for finding a jacket that matched that tie. It was very excellent. Serious?
I really can't focus on it.
Anything else on the good of the order? Then we will proceed to our executive session, noting that councillor Devlin is recused. We need to take a roll call. And we will need a roll call vote in order to do so before councillors get up and start wandering around.
Motion to go into executive session.
Move to executive session for that purpose, so stated. And second?
Second. Moved in seconded.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin is recused. Councillor Aigman?
Yes.
Councillor Junta?
Yes.
Councillor Khan? Councillor O'Brien has left. Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tanta?
Yes.
Councillor Connell. We are in executive session.
And we will not be coming out of executive session tonight. Well, we will come out, but we will not be conducting any further discussions.
There should be.